It's freezing here today. It does.
Right. How did that?
So they're hundred degrees or different?
Yeah, here's your anger first and now yours on your client here. Season, shelter. I'm a sonar though, I've never been in here first but I.
You're lucky.
Yeah?
One time you'll do it and you'll say. This is what Amy.
Alright, this is all the people we were supposed to have. Five?
So I will call to order to the July twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two meeting of the Planning Commission. Anyone can please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Commissioner Bardis?
Here.
Commissioner Kempner?
Here.
Commissioner Patterson?
Here.
Commissioner Stern is not here, Commissioner Pasalakwa is not here. Commissioner Dolan?
Here.
Commissioner Hamame?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you, um, does anybody have a motion to excuse our missing commissioners?
Motion.
Oh, go ahead.
Take it.
Can we voice vote that one?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Who was the motion by?
Joe.
Thanks.
Approval of agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And approval of the minutes, does anyone have any changes to the minutes or motions to approve?
Motion to approve.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, this is one. Communications. Kristin, do we have any communications?
Nothing.
Um, this is going real fast. And citizens' comments, um, this is for items not on the agenda. You will have time to address agenda items during the meeting. For any comments, we ask that you keep come to the podium, state your name and city of residence, and limit your comments to three minutes. The Planning Commission will not engage you in conversation, but will be noting your comments and concerns, and will try to address them during the discussions. Do we have anyone for citizen comments? Okay. Um, moving on to PSP thirteen-twenty-two, thirty-one, twenty-eleven mile. Um, Kristin, do you want to, uh?
Um, yes, just very briefly, so this particular item is a sketch plan, which means it has not been reviewed by any staff and consultants, but as we've done with other marijuana establishments, and as is open to any applicant, they are permitted to come before you, and we do encourage them to do so, to get any comments that you might have to be incorporated in a future site plan submittal. So I will turn that over to the applicant.
And thank you. Uh, Madam, uh, Ms. Kepner, are you Madam Chair now, or?
I'm Vice Chair right now, Kristin was Chair, I moved, I'm Vice Chair, so we're kind of in limbo till next month, so.
Hi. Fair enough. I am Aaron Geyer, I am Lead Counsel for the applicant who happens to be Yellow Tail Ventures. We were one of the high-scoring candidates for the Marijuana Provisioning Center and, uh, adult use facility. Uh, we are here this evening as Ms., yeah, as she described to, for here for preliminary review. Uh, in the audience, we have Ms. Hill, who is our project lead. We have Joseph Ayello, who is our maj-, uh, our sole, not major, our sole stakeholder. Um, our civil engineer and project manager is choking down his dinner in the parking lot. And so I will turn the floor over to you, and please let us know what you think, or where we should go, or what suggestions you would like us to do.
I have a quick question, just, just for verification, since this is just a sketch plan, it, it is not a public, was not notified, is it public hearing?
So all of the Marijuana Provisioning Centers, anytime that they're appearing on an agenda are noticed?
Okay.
Not as a public hearing, but as an informational, um, item in, in this particular case.
Okay.
Okay, do you want to tell us anything about your site before we start discussing, or?
Come on up.
Yeah, I think currently, right now, it's an auto body shop. Um, we are going to maintain the building, um, and redo the entire site. Um, so right now, we're maintaining the building, we're adding a little bit in the back just to, um, square it all off, because it's kind of a messy building. There is a power pole that goes through it, which we are then, um, adding, or we're removing it and putting the power under, um, the facility versus through the building. Um, so we are redoing the entire site, new parking. Um, we are doing pervious pavers throughout the entire parking lot. Um, we are maintaining the second, um, like a garage for the auto body, so we are maintaining the current, um, business and adding our business to it. Um, so it'll have the multi-use.
And if you look on page four, you can see the greenery that we're proposing with the artwork.
Green roof.
There are benches that are.
In case anybody's listening at home, can I convince you to go move to the microphone if you're gonna talk? Sorry, thank you.
No problem.
Sorry. Um, we're adding, yeah, public benches, we're adding artwork, we are adding bike racks, there is an EV station for the new wave of electric vehicles. And so that's not just for our customers, that's for anyone's use.
Yep.
And.
We do have some of the green roof aspects, the living walls along the, um, the barrier wall between the housing and the, the facility.
We, as far as parking, we have, okay, let, let's just go right down to bare facts.
Yeah.
The square footage encompasses the number of spaces that we needed, we surpassed that. In addition to that, we have private parking agreements with the facility to our south and to our, I mean, to our east and to our west.
Which I think I submitted those to you as well, just so that you had them.
So we have more than ample parking, which, um, I, I've been in attendance for some of the other sessions, and that seems to have been a concern, or something that you absolutely wanted to know. What is the traffic flow, how is parking going to be accomplished? Obviously, we have no intention of parking in neighborhood parking lots, or, but the nature of the beast wouldn't allow for that anyway. This is get in, buy your merchandise, get out. This is not, let's go have dinner and come back in an hour and a half.
Yeah. And we do have, we're definitely improving the site too, the existing photos, I mean, we're adding lots of green space and barriers, sidewalks, like it, it's definitely improving what's currently there.
So the garage that is there currently, you're providing a garage space for that?
Yeah, garage and office space, and then they have the shared restroom.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm not seeing, or is that baked into the required parking for the retail on page twelve?
On page twelve?
Garage is here, I think they had the parking spots up here.
Correct, yes, they would have those spots.
Further. To the north.
Correct.
Further, yep.
So the four spaces along the north property line are for the garage?
Yes.
Okay.
That also.
And he only has one lift.
Okay.
And so, reality speaking, he would probably use only one vehicle or one spot.
Sure, but there's typically in a, in a mechanic facilities, there's typically a, a couple of cars that are sitting there waiting for people to be picking them back up, or dropping them off, or.
That's not the nature of his beast, that's not how he typically runs, where he will take in an influx of cars, work on them, and then turn them over. This is typically less than a one-day job, in fact, it's typically oil change, get in, get out.
Okay.
And I think it's operated by one person too, I don't think he could, um.
Correct.
Handle the, the load of multiple.
And our understanding is he's phasing out also.
Okay.
Eventually, I'm not exactly sure how long he intends to stay there, but he has indicated to us, he and his wife, who are the office manager and himself, and, you know, have indicated an intention to phase out.
So with his parking, that's where the charging station's gonna be, next to the dumpster?
No, the charging stations, I think, are, he might have indicated that in the wrong spot.
Down at the southeast corner, I think I saw, right?
Oh, sorry, I was looking at the.
Yeah, yeah.
I see.
Now, you said that the, the EV parking would be for everybody?
If someone wants to use it, I'm not gonna chase them out of the parking lot and say, get out.
Are you concerned?
Or tow truck them out.
Are you concerned with somebody parking there every single night, charging their car? Or all day on a Saturday?
Well, first of all, we're open on Saturday.
Exactly, they'd be taking up one of the spots.
No, 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 I, I, I mean, your, your point is well-taken. I guess it's one of those where we intend as much as possible to be neighborly.
Sure.
If it becomes a nuisance, then we'll deal with it at that point. If it becomes friendly and no one is using it, and someone comes to us and says, hey, can I? I'm not gonna throw them out.
Yeah, it might as well be a spot that's used, is your, your thought on?
Can they be used after hours?
Uh, can they be used after hours?
That too, like, to separate the businesses, break down the parking, just to make sure that there's sufficient.
I, I'm not familiar with this, these stations, but can they be used after hours when you're closed? Can people come at night and charge all night?
I'm not familiar.
Generally, they can.
I don't know if we're gonna be powered all the, the twenty-four seven.
There are multiple types of, um, business profiles we can add to this. We're not sure what methodology we're going with. Typically, we're obviously gonna go with the friendly nature first. If something changes, then we're gonna broadcast it.
Okay. Now, tho- those parking spaces along the north there, I, so you guys have a dumpster?
Yes.
So, so it seems like some of the provisioning centers have dumpsters, some of them don't. They maintain the garbage inside the facility. Um, the, the way, the dumpsters looks like, um, that it's inside the utility easement right now, which may be a problem. I'm, I'm assuming that's also the reason, you, to get into the, the dumpster enclosure, you push those, uh, two, four, four or five spots? You push them to the north a little bit? Is that, is that why they got put, I mean, I, I'm wondering if they could be pushed, pushed back? I'm wondering if they could be pulled back to the south and get some, some greenery or something in there?
Yeah.
But we also need a minimum number of spaces.
I think we could still get the spaces when we moved down, it does get a little tight with the garage though, so that was the only, that's why we did push them back, so that if you are backing a car out of the garage, you kind of have that little bit of more maneuver room.
Yeah, at the back, if you're parked on the far west side, back straight to the south and then out. And then I was wondering if, because of the dumpster enclosure, you, you needed that little extra space to pull forward, so you could probably pull out or reverse back to the west, and then pull out on the Griffith.
Yeah, 'cause I even thought about, like, tucking it behind the building, but I'm like, oh, if someone's parking there, it's kind of doesn't really work that well. Um, you know, kind of tucked where we have this, kind of the sidewalk that goes behind the building with the back access. But I think I was told too, that we should, we will put it in a nice enclosure too, so it's not visible.
And you guys are planning on, um, putting a screen wall? I think there is an existing screen wall there?
I think we're redoing, 'cause it.
There is an existing screen wall.
Yeah.
Are you gonna maintain that screen wall, or put up a new one? Okay.
Either, yes.
We're gonna evaluate what state it's in. But there will be one, yes.
I'm doing a lot of talking, so somebody go.
I think it's really sharp-looking, um, I think you did a nice job with the design. It's definitely gonna improve the aesthetics in the area.
I agree. I was kind of, uh, when I walked on site, I was like, oh my god, this is not what I expected, but I think it'll look great when it's.
Now it's a garage.
My concern is a concern that I'm sure that the Planning Department is gonna handle, but it is with, in relation to access and parking. You see these facilities have way more traffic than anybody anticipates. Um, I certainly would not want to see like a Starbucks on Woodward there, where it backs up traffic, I would not want to see that on eleven mile. I'm sure that the Planning Department will work with you on, I don't know, appropriate signage, or some indication that there's parking, if in fact, this parking agreement is approved, the, the reciprocal shared parking, or whatever, if they're just giving you an easement for parking, that, um, maybe there's signage that indicates there's parking on Griffith, or parking across the street, um, to try to move things along a little bit.
We also discussed even if that is.
There's employee parking on, uh, Griff- Griffith and eleven mile already, between the diner waitresses, the landscaping people.
I'm sorry, if you're gonna speak, I need you to come to the microphone, so that those at home can hear. And I, I think I need your name too.
Robert Courtney, eighteen-hundred Griffith. Um, I live like across the street, the rea- reason I'm here is, it's already sounds like, this is just for the planning, for redoing the building, for pot dispensary. And, and, uh, so it sounds like you've already made your decisions, that's okayed already. Um, and now this is just for the building, uh, facility?
Um, okay, so first I thought you were part of their group. So, we're not to the citizen comment, it's time yet, we'll get to citizen comments in just one minute, so if I can ask you, hold up.
Sure.
And then you can come back and, and address.
Sure, but I mean, there already is people that, employees.
Yeah.
Um.
If I can address, I'm sorry, I'm gonna kill your name, can I just simply refer to you as Lisa?
Sure.
And, and again, this is not with any disrespect. It was our thinking or our intention. It was our thinking and our intention to have the employees use the off-site parkings to leave as many spaces as we can for customer parking, realizing that if that becomes an issue, we can use the overflow that way.
He.
Joe.
Yeah, the application lists two employees, so that's all that's parking there.
Yeah, no, that's right.
So, I mean, the other ones were, again, this is much.
Do you intend on only having?
Hundred people there, no.
Do you intend on only having two employees?
We have, we, we're expecting between two and five total employees on a regular shift.
So, it, this is.
We are not like, uh, Mr. Roberts, who indicated that he has a hundred employees with fifteen different checkout stalls, and that, that's not our, our, our operation at all.
But it also includes the people working at the shop, so that'd be another one to two? Him and his wife, at the garage?
That's all they have, she's in and.
Right, right, so that's two, but then you have five, up to five, so that's seven, or you think?
Well, they drive together, if you're looking for parking counts, they drive together, and that's why we also accommodated with extra, uh, shared parking. So we have, I believe, eight on the left side of the building, which really is gonna be employee parking, so that covers them.
Just, sorry, one other thing about the parking, and maybe you can, maybe it's just me thinking about it, but why aren't the, um, s- um, north lot, so the ones where the charging station is, why aren't those being used for the garage? Wouldn't, isn't it the garage, like, then he could back his car in, right into, and you wouldn't have to worry about that, next to the dumpster?
Oh, the north ones are here.
Oh, y- yeah. Wouldn't that just logically make more sense? Or is there a reason that you would rather have that for the provisioning center?
I don't think that we're gonna identify exactly what spots as customers for him come in and park. They may be dropping a car off late at night, they may park it and drop it off in the front. So, there's, there's a little, we're, you know, running through the woods here a little bit with our, um, our renter now. Um, and we, obviously, as we walk through this, we're gonna learn more how he operates. You know, they're a little loose right now, they're two old, old, um, old Polish people from Poland, who had a great life here, and, and intend to move on at some point. You know, they're in their late sixties, I believe it is, close to seventy.
But we have to look at it for a site, not, you, you know, not, not who.
If you want us to identify which ones are them, we will label them and put signs on them.
Would you like us to do that?
I just think it might make it easier.
We can do that.
Because having, having his business park in the north, I mean, the garage is in the ba- in the south. Or, I'm sorry, I said that backwards, but.
No, no, the garage is right, the garage is right next to them, to those parking spots.
So it's not by the dumpster? The garage is not on eleven?
If I may.
It's attached.
The garage is on the Griffith.
It's in the building.
No, you're looking at a live view of the building currently.
Yeah, yeah, like on page sixteen, it's gray, grayed out.
Those are not garage doors there in the front.
Yeah, I know.
Those are windows per the ordinance.
So.
I don't know what page this is, eleven.
That one shows a two, Kristin.
There we go.
Correct, so your dumpster and your EV parking is marked right next to that, is what I'm looking at.
The dumpster is here.
Yeah.
We might have labeled them on the one sheet.
Right.
Where's the EV?
So, I, just to me, the garage parking would make sense if it was next to the garage. You know what I mean?
Yeah, even.
Probably will be using our, our back here, this is where they would come in next.
For sure, that's, that, I think we're saying the same thing.
But if that's where they want them, that's fine.
Identifying these spots.
No, I, maybe I heard it wrong, but that's what I was thinking, like, the garage spots would make sense to be by the dumpster.
Yes, yes, yes.
And the EV charging station maybe have to move if you anticipate him having cars, even two there, 'cause that, the one you showed in your packet is two, a double charger.
Yeah, and I think he indicated that, 'cause page two, we have them towards the front, I think this, page ten, he shows them here.
Yes.
But we actually have them.
It was our intention to put them on the north.
Good suggestion.
Thank you. So we need to clean up the drawings.
Yes, yeah.
I have a couple questions, um, your dog run, who is that for?
Um, a dog run is a general concept of green space.
So, I, I guess I'm, I'm wondering, 'cause it's tucked in behind the building, right? So, is, is the intention to actually, like, be using it for dogs? Or is it just for green space, and we don't have to actually call it a dog run, we can just have it green space?
Sorry.
Joe, would you, could I answer that question?
About the dog run?
Yeah.
I don't know about the dog run.
There was a dog run in the back, right? So we moved these to accommodate the parking and the garage.
Sure.
Which did eat up a little bit of the green space.
Mm-hmm, we left it, yeah, we called it always the dog run, and we left it from the original submission for your, to get your license, so, yeah. But like you said, if we move the parking forward, we get a little more green space, so there might be a little play, but I think it was just meant to be green space.
Just green space, okay.
Where's that labeled at, 'cause I did not see the dog run.
Uh, I think it's all the way at the end, you see a, a page that says dog run, twenty-seven, on page twenty-seven. Like the living wall and.
Yeah, it's kind of more of an experience, so I think we were planning those, um.
That's where I thought the bio-retention was going, though.
Those barrier walls, yeah, they're gonna be more of a living wall.
Where's the bio-retention area at?
Underneath. So we're going to capture, I think you started a sketch, but I think we were gonna capture on that corner there, where we have all that green space and the planters, it's hard to see.
That's the bioswells, and we have, uh, capturing devices over it. And Joe, if I'm not mistaken, in here is gonna be the retention system, right?
Right, so the red area, it are pervious pavers.
Mm-hmm.
The parking lot.
Yeah.
That corner island there is a rain garden for that little area.
That southeast cor- or the southeast corner of the building, or southeast corner of the parking lot?
Yeah. And then everything will be, ideally, the way I have it right now is the detention, underground detention system will be in the, underneath the parking spaces along eleven mile, and then discharging to the sewer in eleven mile.
Okay.
And restricted.
My other question is about the beehives. Um, I'm not totally sure that our ordinance allows for beehives.
I think that was an added thing that I know that they are doing at the Shinola Hotel. So I think it was just an added, like, incentive, if it's allowed, awesome, if not, I think they're fine, it was just an added incentive that they are doing it down at the Shinola Hotel, and I think it works really well, so, it's kind of another thing that they have experience in, that they were kind of.
Right. So it, it feels like a very cool idea.
Yeah.
Um, but it's also not a super tall building, right? So, my worry would be the annoyance level for the neighboring business, or the neighboring residents.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, oh, and then, the, the garage. Um, I guess what we don't wanna see, and, and I'm not sure exactly how to go about this, but what we don't wanna see are kind of junker cars parked there, you know, to fix up and sell, or what have you, without, you know, any sort of screening, um, and, so.
I think to address that particular issue, um, well, actually, I was just simply gonna say that he is not a reseller, he's not a wholesaler, that's not his stock in trade. So, again, I, I don't see that as really any concern. For past, based on past practices, he's never done that in the past.
Right.
Richard has not done that in the past.
But if it's a use as a mechanic, and he retires and moves to Florida, and somebody else comes in, and it's the same use technically, but he is a reseller, could that happen, or is that, would that still have to go back towards the?
They would have to hold a license to, to sell vehicles.
But the use.
But the use is the same though, technically, so would they have to come back to the city to get?
No, if they're not expanding the use, the use would continue. It could be another person that comes in and uses it as a, a repair garage. And I'm trying right now, I'll, we'll let you know if there's somewhere in the ordinance. Typically, in an ordinance, you'll see something that will prohibit the storage of.
Clunkers.
Yeah. Or unlicensed vehicles without screening.
I think we went through some other property on eleven mile, or maybe this one, I can't remember, where we worked on, on having it behind a fence to, um, conceal.
That's typically required.
Um.
Like, again, Mr. Lada's practice for the year, I mean, he's been there almost fifteen years, if not longer.
My, my concern's not with him, though, it's with, if, if some, if he retires, and somebody else comes in, it's the same use, and they have a different, it's still a mechanic, but they have a different philosophy, is they park five cars in your parking lot, and there's two of them that have no wheels, or, you know. I'm looking to the future of what is possible there, is what I'm thinking of.
Is there some?
And to that answer, it would be, if that, it take, yeah, no, it's, let, let's play the game to the logical conclusion, and that is, the Ladas have now retired. Obviously, we're going to be screening new applicants, with the understanding that there are certain things that they will be allowed to do, certain things they will not be allowed to do, and so that will be one of the criteria. Do you intend to resell? No, you do, oh, I'm sorry, that's gonna be a problem.
Could maybe a no overnight parking sign handle that problem?
That's an option.
I'm assuming we could also suggest that the next use be a different, smaller use also.
I, I see a, ooh. I see a, ooh, I guess if we're playing the game of logic, what if you retire? And then, we don't approve.
Yeah, then, it, it, they, it would have to come back before the city, I think.
Somebody else can't buy the building?
But I think 'cause of the, the nature of the use, it would have to come back, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I mean, there'd be other uses that could be permitted in the building, retail uses and such, but, yeah, the marijuana business licenses are specifically granted to particular businesses.
But a retail could go in there with the garage attached, and then it's different owners, but the site is what we are recommending for approval. So, not the use, it's the site.
Well, you're, you're recommending the site, but the site would be set up to accommodate a garage use. So if someone came in and wanted to do a garage use in the same exact space, it doesn't need to come back before you,
Correct.
there'd be no additional requirements associated with it.
So if there's a mechanic that now wants to, instead of doing oil changes, wants to do engine repairs, and has to wait for a part, we shouldn't be able to limit that he can't park it over.
I mean theoretically, but the idea is that you control, you wouldn't want someone storing junk cars anywhere in the city without appropriate screening.
I'm not saying junk cars, but let's say he.
It's just a car that's.
Waiting for a part, or waiting for, I mean, it's not junk necessarily, it's licensed car. It's my car that I dropped off, but he can't get my radiator for two days.
Then yes, your car could sit in the parking lot.
Do we have any more questions before I move to citizen comments?
So, on page fifteen, the driveway in Griffith is narrow with a single flow arrow, traffic flow arrow, out. But on the other pages, it's bidirectional, so, just curious, you might wanna check if that curb line. I'm assuming you're accommodating two-way traffic out, but that one shows a single, and it looks pretty narrow, so, uh, the, all the other pages are showing double.
Yeah, I think it was meant to be double, but we have been having some conversations with the civil engineer a little bit on this, to, that we're willing to accommodate, like, if people don't want people turning left into the neighborhood, that maybe it's just turn right only, or, I think we need to do a little more exploring into the, the traffic, but I think it was meant to have both directions, just because you have someone coming in there for the dumpster, and so, yeah.
Okay, yeah, like on page twelve, it's bidirectional.
Yeah.
So just trying to understand. And I think currently it's bidirectional?
Yeah, I think it is, too.
On both frontages, or both that?
If you look on page eight, sir.
If you can find it.
Page eight, we'll help you.
I felt like the whole place was a parking lot.
Wait, why is your page eight different than my page eight? There's one that's labeled traffic flow.
Yep. That's eleven here for me.
Oh, mine says eight. Yes, and it shows the two directions.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that.
Yeah, and, okay, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, no, like I said, we've actually been having a little bit of conversation on that, just if there's additional signage that we wanna include, just to make sure that people aren't disrupting the residents too much coming in and out. Not that I'm expecting a ton, but.
Yeah, I guess that's something we'll wanna know, if it's gonna be bidirectional or one-way out. I mean, it should be consistent in the plans, but, um.
I prefer, I prefer it, but if that's.
I suppose since it's bidirectional now, it should stay bu- it should stay that way.
Mm-hmm.
But, I mean, you have, there's frontage on eleven mile, too, so. Yeah, second question I had is, um, I know this is auto pay, auto repair, but it kinda looks like it may have been a gas station in the past, just wanted to ver-
Long time ago.
Yes.
In fact, if, to answer your question, sir, in the very, where the parking lot is that faces eleven mile, there is a gas station island, or the remnants of the concrete, for, because you are absolutely correct. Long time ago, there was at one time a gas station there, that did have a gas station island, right where the, these parking lot that faces eleven.
Okay, yeah, I, I just, for your due diligence, 'cause usually if there's underground storage tanks, those are, like, there's a li- like, the whole, the state keeps a record of those, so.
Yes, we've already explored that.
It would really disrupt, disrupt your excavation.
The tanks are all removed and it's clean.
Okay.
We checked with, with, uh, Eagle.
Eagle, okay.
Can you please educate me on the living walls? I ask a cou- for a couple of reasons. Uh, it looks great in this picture, where all, they're all green and red and, um, but what, how does that water, what happens when the grass, when the greenery dies? How is it look? Um, I'm just trying to get a visual of how this would look in the winter.
Good question. I.
Spray paint?
No, I think we have to explore that a little bit more, too. It'll look great in the summer, but yeah, we do have to think about it.
That was requested from the city on the application to have green roofs, living walls. We accommodated you.
Yeah.
I suppose the equivalent answer, let me get back to the, the screen, would be, when you go to, say, Wrigley Field in Chicago, and they have the ivy on the back walls, how does it look in the wintertime? Dead.
Well, I think.
Spring and fall, they, comes back to life.
Well, there's gonna be something, some facility or structure on these walls that accommodate the greenery. There's gotta be some, uh, uh, planters, or wiring, or something, that, that's kinda what I'm trying to understand how it would look. Forget the dead stuff.
Yeah.
But, but what's gonna be visible when it does die?
Yeah, and I think that's why we did show, like, planter. I think we wanna create some sort of planters and some sort of elegant design to it, too. So like you said, when it is dead, it has, like, the wood slats, or some metal, like, make it look, so that when there isn't anything there, it looks.
So you're now talking about what looks like, on page twenty-seven, where it talks about the artificial grass, dog run, and living wall, which this wall looks a little different. This one does look like it has pots, maybe, uh, planters, whereas the other one didn't. And then, and then I guess a follow-up question is, why is there artificial grass here? Um, is there, do you not intend to sprinkler, and you don't wanna worry about grass dying? I'm just curious why that, you wouldn't just have grass?
It's gonna be just grass. I don't know why.
I think the image just may portray that. I don't think that was.
It actually says artificial grass dog run.
I'm looking at that. I don't know why it's so artificial. It'll be grass. And it honestly will look more, like I said, 'cause that's the whole wall. I think it's meant to be planters, a system kind of hung on to those concrete, um, stone walls. Similar to more of the rendering.
On, on page twenty-six, you're showing the living wall, um, at the property line, on the west property line?
Yes.
Twenty-six. So, so is that to purposely keep people from cutting in and out of the parking lots, or?
Yeah.
Thought you needed more greenery, or, so more of a traffic control item?
Traffic control, visual, um, better visual experience. I think we do have to cut that wall back a little. But, I don't think we show it all the way in the plan. I know he marked it all the way, but, indicating.
Yeah, and then we have a little here.
So as you explore what you're going to do for the living wall, and especially what it will look like in the winter, because it's fairly prominent, um, as you're going along eleven mile, we would definitely want to see.
Yeah, we need, uh.
What that's gonna look like.
We would need a cut sheet. I mean, it's very close to the driveway for coming out distance and turning in, so like, we need to know the height and everything of what that one wall is in between the two properties.
Absolutely.
Facing eleven mile.
You, you'd have to come back at least twenty-five feet, wouldn't it, from the property line for sight vision?
For a clear curf- uh, yeah, for clear vision. I mean, you need like a triangle to see through there, and, and there's got, we'd have to have something there in the ordinance regarding the sight vision for a wall like that.
Right, we would need clear vision triangles shown on the plan. Sure. Yeah, we'll start pulling cut sheets.
We have one more, okay.
For your time.
I have one more, too.
Um, the photometrics plan on sheet seventeen, um, looks like it's missing the north, very northernmost edge of the, the, the light.
It is. We had the lighting engineering, engineer do it before we pushed the parking back.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah.
So you were thinking.
Well, then, I'll see it, and I actually, after seeing the lighting, um, I feel like we need more, but.
And I would just add, it, it should have, I know we don't have the most in-depth photometrics. I don't think we have anything, actually.
A little bit.
But, a little bit, a little bit. Um, I'd like to see a note on there about it being shielded. Obviously, we don't wanna have any glare to the, our neighbors to the north of us, and.
Yeah.
It should be shielded, and, and there should be no light spill over at the property line.
Got it, sure.
All right, let, oh, question?
Yep. On page twelve, for the parking math, um, I guess I would make sh- can you, two things. One, make sure that this includes, uh, sort of the employee count and the tenant count. And then I, you don't, you have two bike racks, so we do offer the bike credit, right, for parking spaces that are not listed. So just as a, for your information.
Is it two spots for two bike racks, or one spots for two bike racks? I can't recall, it's been a while since.
I think it's one spot for two bike racks, but I can confirm that with you.
We'll, we'll verify. It's under the, uh, parking code.
Yeah, I'll take a look. Yeah, and I'll add the, um, the employee ones counts on there, so.
All right, let me get some citizen comments here, um, and then we can discuss more. Um, so if you'd like to comment on this item, come to the podium, name and city of residence. I would also like to remind you guys that the number of marijuana establishments and the location of marijuana establishments are not in our hands. City Council has decided that. Our only ability is to make sure that the sites are meeting the ordinances. Um, and if that, if you'd like to come up and speak, please do.
Uh, Robert Courtney Berkeley, eighteen hundred Griffith. Um, yeah, I mean, I was kinda looking at the notice that I got sent here. I mean, I didn't even notice, I never received notice, A, that the city council was determining a dispensary. You know, I mean, I have nothing against people that wanna smoke it recreationally or, uh, medically, but I really don't wanna look at one across my street, in which I'm gonna have to now. Um, you know, some of the issues you're talking about with, you know, parking and this and that, I mean, with the current businesses that are, you know, that are in there, which is the repair facility, the, the landscapers, and I know, I lived there, so I have, uh, waitresses from the restaurant parking on the street in front of our houses. Um, landscapers, um, and some of your issues with these people, you know, about overnight parking, this and that. I mean, a guy's been in a repair facility and had cars out overnight, or waiting for a part for whatever, a day or two, for fifty years. Um, and some of the issues that you're bringing up for these people, I mean, I don't know. I mean, a little bit disconcerning, you know, whether it's overnight or not. Um, my main thing was, you know, parking on the street, um, that takes up my, parking in front of my house, my neighbors' houses currently, with the existing small little few things that are going on. If you drive through Hazel Park and you look at a dispensary there, man, there's a line out the door. Where do all these people park? I mean, there's a, if you drive down John R. to any of the dispensaries, or a couple over off a, off a nine mile, uh, there, there's, there certainly are some lines, and, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight parking spaces out front, or whatever, I don't know if that'll cut it during a day. Uh, it's gonna be something new for Berkeley, and, uh, there's nothing I can do about city council that's already approved, something that I really don't wanna cross my street. My new Presbyterian minister that just moved in two weeks ago, she's, they, she was a bit shocked. Uh, they couldn't be here, they already had vacation schedule, but she's a bit shocked. Um, she, I doubt she would've bought that house, knowing that, that she's gonna look across the street at dispensary. When I looked at the paper and knew that this is just about building, and, and whether authorizing this, that, uh, you know, I still showed up, 'cause I do have a concern about the, the parking. And, I mean, I had a, one of my daughters and her husband sold the house, they were living with us for about two months before they, two and a half months before they found a place. The, when you call in and get a overnight permit, they only allow like fourteen days. The cops then say, hey, ask one of the business neighbors if you can, if you can park there. So, hey, Joe, my kid's, uh, you know, gonna be, uh, coming back over for more than fourteen days. Can we use your parking lot overnight? I'll have it out by seven o'clock in the morning.
I'm gonna ask that you address.
Well, my point is, is that, you know, so, y'all are trying to figure out something, but the cops also tell you something different. You know, that I've dealt with personally, you know, 'cause Berkeley has no overs- overnight parking on the street. You know, and, uh, they limited my, my daughter and my son-in-law. And, uh, and if it wasn't for my relationship with, uh, the owner of Auto One, you know, we would've been, uh, SOL, so. Um, good luck with deciding about your parking.
Thank you.
Good evening. Paul Hansen, uh, Berkeley, eleven Gardner. I have several concerns with the, number one, just the aesthetic view of the proposal. With the living wall, as you've already mentioned, uh, you know, you still have a subs- uh, an infrastructure for it. What is that going to look like? Number two, the other thing I have concern with, it sounds as though permit and licensing was available and made available to them based upon perks that they may have generated in order to get that, i.e. the dog run, the bees, the bike and the EV, and the EV stations. I would subthink that anybody who owns the EV vehicle would have a, a substantial charging unit at their facility. So, with respect to the dimensions and, and the proposal of the building, it seems to me it's more of a cafe, rather than just a dispensary. If you're offering EV, uh, charging stations, you're expecting a person to come there and stay there a little bit longer than just, um, a carry-out type of, of facility. With that in mind, that's also going to, in my opinion, leave open the ease of somebody sitting around with the benches and things, even on the exterior of the facility, smoking and partaking in their product, which is fine, it's legal. However, me living so close with the winds blowing, I don't really care to smell that, okay? Um, we've also talked about the lighting, and I can appreciate you wanna keep your building lighted and your property lit for security reasons. However, we have already, in that area, have challenges with lighting from neighboring buildings. Particularly, the giant spotlights that are in the back of the parking lot of that facility now. I know in the past, they had had a, um, a tented type structure in there, but the problem that we have is in the wintertime. There are no foliage on the trees, so that light just comes as a beacon in front of our property and our windows. As, just as the auto repair and resale shop right there on the corner across McKinney of, of, uh, on Gardner, right there. Their lights act as a beacon as well. We've had discussions with them. They tend to, tend to keep the spotlights off. Um, the ones that are behind the building pointed west, so that helps us out a lot, otherwise it's just a beacon in our windows. My other challenge that I have is with the fact that this is gonna be a dispensary, and I know licensing is already dissolved through the, uh, city council. But my problem is also with the use of their product, uh, especially in the fact that we have a middle school right down the street. Children walking from Oak Park, crossing eleven mile, going down there, they're gonna be subject to smelling and seeing that as well. I don't know if we wanna portray that in our city. I know that there's another facility already looking up the Seven Points up there on Woodward. I don't care how that's maintained, that's on a major highway, and I'm sure they may not have the same challenges we have being as close to the neighborhood, the surrounding homes. Yes, parking is going to be an issue, with limited parking space, especially with the garage in use that we already have, as one resident already mentioned. We have, uh, um, patrons to the restaurant, as well as employees, parking on our, on our side street all the time. So if I wanna pull my car out so my wife can get her vehicle out, I have no place to park my car temporarily. Um, and we have three cars that we're juggling, not that that's, you know, corporate, government's fault, but that's just how life is. All day long, you're always, uh, parking there, as well as with the adjacent business, the auto repair. There one sub- section of the love Gardner, um, to eleven mile, there's an indented section. That facility there always has vehicles parked right there, as well as we get trucks dumping new vehicles there all the time. I just don't think we really need, I think they need a larger parking space and planning for such. Um, I would like to see them be able to use the parking that's available on the other side of the mile, on the Oak Park side, which is finally being used for the. which is finally being used for the, uh, microbreweries over there, um, and behind the, uh, car washes. With the wall coming up separating the two properties of the restaurant, there's sometimes, there's already a challenge turning right, going, uh, west on Eleven Mile because of the, the existing restaurant there. I don't think we need to have something inhibiting or blocking the field of view going to the east. I think that's going to be a challenge. I don't know how you're gonna resolve it, but that's something that really needs to be looked into prior to building approval. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I ask Kristen a follow-up?
Um, yeah, so we're gonna move to discussion and you can ask a question if you need to during that, oh, for a second though.
If I may, I'd like to keep one second. The other thing that I have concern about with is safety for our neighborhood and our surrounding homes. Are these, the question I would have is, with it being a dispensary, and there are some lefarious people out there who may want to take advantage of any type of given situation where they can abscond product for free. What is there implemented as far as a safety plan for the, the community itself and the surrounding homes? I think that should be a major concern. Yes, I understand they're gonna have security for their property, cameras, safety alarms, things of that nature. But what are they going to do to help provide additional safety for the general public?
Okay, thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Alright, so from those, I did see, we did discuss some of the living wall concerns and, and they're gonna come up with some drawings to better give us an idea of how that would look at other times. EV stations, I think, are, are becoming more popular and something that we as a city, I think, really would like to see more businesses have. But I don't think it indicates that they're going to be sitting there for a long period of time, because there's a number of different levels of charging. And it could be for their own employees' use or, um, for the garage's use. I just, I don't think them by themselves necessarily indicate that people are going to be there for a long time. I believe the laws do not let you to smoke, allow you to sit even in a bench and smoke it, consume marijuana, um, in public. So I think the benches are a nice added effect just for the ambiance of the city, not necessarily solely for their customers to consume. And we talked about the field of view being blocked for turning out, um, and so I think they're going to relook at that. As far as the middle school goes, there was a certain footage range from any school, um, that they were allowed. And this exceeds that distance, so again, that becomes out of our hands. That's something that was by the state, the city, and, you know, by the time it gets to us, we don't have any options. I think I addressed most of those. And the lighting, um, yes, lighting should always be shielded. They were going to give us a much better idea, like this is still in rough draft form, right? And, um, and I'm hoping that they'll be, um, considerate in the idea that, that lights should be shielded away from the residents and that they should not be blaring in your windows in any way, shape or form.
Obviously, we were providing you with a photo metric that shows you that it is downward facing and does not blind the neighbors. The only issue that you did not address was the gentleman's comments regarding safety for the neighborhoods. And I do not believe that that is either required by either state law or by your ordinance. And to the extent that we do provide a rather elaborate security system, more sophisticated than most business, businesses, that does benefit the neighborhood itself.
Will you guys have in parking, security?
I'm sorry, one more.
Will you have, will you have security in the parking lot? So for their concern was somebody charging up their car at the EV station, sitting on the bench and enjoying their, their, their product that they just bought. Would there be security that would shoo them along?
Yes, we have roaming mobile security guards that will be, that's part of their job function is to patrol the perimeter in addition to control the inside. So yes, that is dealt with. And so no, there is absolutely zero permitted consumption either inside or outside, and that's state law.
Question for Kristen. Would our ordinance require a traffic study to evaluate ingress, egress, access?
Um, that's a good question. So our ordinance would not require that, but I would highly suggest to the applicant that you look at some of your other existing facilities and either scale up or scale down, or maybe you have something that's comparably sized, and do your own quick parking study on how many parking spaces the businesses are utilizing.
I'm, I'm more concerned frankly about access at this point. Whether, I mean, there's, there's talk about, um, the, the corner vision. There's talk about whether it should be enter only off of Griffith, exit only off of Eleven Mile. I mean, I, I'm not a professional that can evaluate whether that's appropriate or not appropriate. But frankly, I, I would think that a traffic study would be appropriate to determine the best way to make this flow.
So, a couple things in response to that. We do have a consulting engineer, HRC does all of our engineering reviews. They have not looked at this plan, um, in any great detail and, and not in regards to traffic circulation yet. So I would defer to them for any comments related to circulation. It does seem like based on the pavement markings or traffic directions that are shown here, it is a little bit confusing, I think, as to how you get around the site. Um, so if that can be better demonstrated, I think that that would be helpful. I wondered how wide the, the, the drive was on Eleven Mile. A dimension there, I think, would be helpful to make sure that there's enough room for two cars to pass. In terms of a traffic study, so we couldn't require a traffic study, this isn't a special land use, so you can't attach it to that. A business of this size, you wouldn't typically see a traffic study for. But that's not to say the applicant couldn't go out of their way and provide something like that, or at least better delineate the access.
It'd be, ideally, it'd be great if those two driveways could be combined in the one, and then you could pick up some additional parking. In a perfect world.
Yeah.
If they're big enough.
Well, it's, it's, two of them together is too wide, most communities wouldn't allow a drive that wide. And it would be confusing with, um, flow in and out between the restaurant and the provisioning center. That's me talking idealistically, though. I know that's not always possible.
Yeah, and to point out, they are moving the driveway to the north, which is better for the corner. The existing driveway is like right on the corner, so from that standpoint, that's good.
I mean, and as far as parking, so they meet the standard. I think we all kind of have a feel that the standard isn't necessarily adequate, but they have provided the extra shared parking, which is the ideal way to do this, because if they don't need it, we haven't built a, another whole parking lot for it. And if they do need it, it's there, yay.
Kind of. The actual agreement that was attached said it can be terminated at any time, so. And whether that's the agreement that it ends up being used, I don't know, but that's what I was in my head thinking. Well, this is great, but for how long?
It wasn't our intention just to use this as a placebo to try and deceive you saying we have this and it really doesn't in fact exist.
I, I, I had no, I, no, don't get me wrong, I never thought that this was just to try to deceive anybody. It, you can do it with very good intentions, but if there's no teeth to it, if it can be terminated at any time, that's something that we need to consider. That's all I was saying, I wasn't implying that you in any way attempted to sneak something past.
Thank you.
I have one question, um, I think it was Paul brought up. So we've talked about these bees and we've talked about the green wall might be changing. How does that affect the point system that was awarded?
I was wondering the same thing, too.
Like, does it have to go back and be regraded, or?
So I can provide a very general answer on that. There was a checklist basically of items, you receive so many points for each particular item that were, that was incorporated into the plan. This particular application did receive points, if I'm remembering correctly, for the green wall. I don't know that the B portion was a part of, a part of the point calculation, I can go back and check.
Bees was not part of that application.
Trust me, I wrote the application, bees were not in my application.
So if, if the points change based on accommodations that cannot be made on the site, then the application is looked at again. And if this applicant falls below the minimum number of points, if you'll recall, there was a three-way tie for the third license, which is why we ended up with five. Then it's my understanding, based on conversations, um, with the city manager's office, that, that this, this site would not qualify if they fall below the points that they were awarded previously. I want to say that, though, with a little bit of apprehension, that I, I would want to go back and ask the city attorney that specifically.
I was just more of a curiosity, and not just for your site, like for the other sites that we've seen, if they do take something away that awarded them points, then city staff looks at it again.
So following up on that, I'm trying to remember the point system, and I, I want to say it was like an overall, like, green sustainability or something like that.
You got five points, I believe, for the green wall or a green roof.
Green roof, and we elected to do both, a wall and a roof.
So did you get?
We got points for both a living wall.
Two separate ones.
Yes, and I believe it might've been two or four points, it's been awhile. I can't recall exactly what number it was, but on or about two or four points for, um, the green space. And they all added up to, I thought it was five total, two, two, and, and then so, something like that.
So my question was going to be, just, if they decided, you know what, the, the living wall's not gonna work for us, does something else fall into that category, or was it solely just green wall, five points?
So there was a couple different categories of types of items, and then you could be awarded points in each of those categories, depending on what types of items that you propose. It's my understanding that the points that you earned in all of the categories were added up at the end, and that they weren't necessarily, you know, um, I don't know what to call the category, but it wasn't like environmental features, you could get a maximum of this point and you couldn't go over that amount. So green wall, let's say, was two points, I'm just throwing numbers out there. Wind turbine was two points, you know.
So they were specific items, it wasn't like?
They were specific items, yes.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify something on the traffic assessment study. What, because I'm with the engineer's office that we're doing this with, um, we can do one, but what are the requirements or the, the triggers that would make it a requirement versus something voluntary? And if we do something voluntary and HRC doesn't agree with our analysis and opinion, because it's two different professional opinions, and we say this would work based on our experience, and they say we don't agree with that, take another thirty days to figure it out, what recourse do we have since it wasn't required?
So, correct, a traffic study's not required here. I don't know that the planning commission is suggesting a full-blown traffic study, it sounds like they're more interested in access.
No, it's in an assessment, I mean, that's, that's the first, the lower level, there's a TIA and a TIS. So we're doing the, we could do the TIA, um, which is basically just a flow and kind of parking analysis and, uh, minimal counts kind of a thing, which is, I think, would help cover. But again, if we say, let's just say, we agree with both in and out on both Eleven Mile and Griffith, and HRC comes back and say, well, no, we want you to limit that to a one-way off Griffith, and that kind of sets the plan back because we've adjusted things, et cetera, and we get bumped.
So there's a couple different options there. If you were to, using the scenario that you described, if HRC were to propose something that what you didn't necessarily include as part of your TIA, you could always say, we'll make the adjustments, and we'd like to go to the planning commission, and we would be willing to make those accommodations. And we're asking the planning commission to approve the site plan with that condition. You could say, we don't agree with you, and we want to go to the planning commission and leave it up to the planning commission. Or you could say, we don't agree with you, and you, we want to spend thirty more days talking about it. So those are really the three different ways that could go.
Okay, just want to be clear, thanks.
Any more discussion? I personally, and I, I don't know how you do it, like, maybe you have a better idea. I would like to see a little bit more landscaping or greenery or something prettier off, right off of Eleven Mile. Um, as opposed to just seeing cars right there, just something to make it pretty for people who are walking past. The flow does feel awkward, but.
It's hard, because we want it to look nice, but we can't take away the parking that we already think is possibly deficient for this use. I agree with you, but.
Well, and without dimensions, I don't know, maybe that's wide enough that you can pull the parking back a smidge and put something pretty in front of it. Without dimensions, I don't know, maybe you can't, but if you can, it would be awesome.
You will review it and, and look at that.
Yeah, like assuming.
We're not saying no, that's the bottom line.
Because I, I don't know if, because I think technically our ordinance reads that it's twenty-foot long spots, and I don't think that there's a two-foot overhang in there, if I recall.
I mean, if you're trying to put something pretty there.
It's enough, but it helps.
We have allowed a two-foot overhang in the pass into a landscape area, and we also have the compact car spots that are an option, too.
Do people really abide by those?
I do, with my compact.
I mean, I think if you have a great big huge truck, you have to, right? Because you're just like, I can't fit in there. I think the, um, so one other element we look at is the glass coverage.
Right.
Yeah, I want to talk about the sign, too.
Yeah, I think that's good, the, the one calculation that was here, so it doesn't seem like more windows or transparency is needed.
I don't love that they're so tinted. I think it's because of the nature of the business, probably.
Yes, the state doesn't allow.
You're not supposed to be able to see in. It's not supposed to be visible from the inside, from the outside looking in.
Oh, but the lobby is more transparent, right?
Right.
You just can't see the sales area.
Are there any requirements for the addition that's going in that would make this different than any of the other site plans or buildings?
No, not really, just the usual setbacks and things like that.
Just squaring it off. Okay.
I have a question about our mural ordinance. So.
Okay.
Because I know this has come up before.
An non-existent one.
But are we allowed to have the si, two si, like the front sign, roses, roses, and then the painting of that on the other side of the building?
So it's my understanding that murals outside of the DDA have gone to the zoning board of appeals for confirmation that they are not assigned. So this is in the Eleven Mile district outside of the DDA, the DDA would have no purview as the body that's reviewing that, and it would go to the zoning board of appeals.
So they would have to go there for approval of that.
That's my understanding of the current process, but I don't know if there's a, a separate consideration for the marijuana businesses. And I can check with the city attorney.
Are you asking about the?
The painting on the?
The mural that will be on the blank wall, not the signs that are showing.
So we have a sign on Eleven Mile?
Yes.
And then the painting of the, um?
Right, but that's, that's not the mural, there's another wall where the dog run is where they.
On the back, correct.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm more concerned about the logo? Because that's considered a second sign, then, correct?
Right, there would have to be some interpretation.
I, I, I mean, it's words of their business.
So if you're looking for timelines, right?
And so then ZBA would have to approve that as well.
But that would be something that we could look at, you know, after the, after the site plan goes through, it would be reviewed separately.
But it's good to alert them that that could be an issue for them.
For your sketch plan.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Any other thoughts, directions?
I, I think it's gonna clean the site up a lot, I think, overall.
Yeah, we're, we're being nitpicky-ish, right? We do appreciate that it is going to look. We do appreciate that it is going to look much nicer.
Improving that site, I, I, a lot.
The bathrooms still are on the outside of the building.
Perfect.
So yes, we're cleaning that up.
You don't intend to keep them there, though? The shared bathroom, okay. All right.
And you will not have the key on a wiretire rip.
That's kind of a nice touch, who knows, but I, I do think it's a little bit dark, but I think it improves the site.
Any other comments that would definitely help us, please?
Explain to me why the sculpture and that mound, because I feel like that is making the flow more awkward, and it's so far back that, you know, it's not public art per se, it's patron art, right?
The, this, this, the public art, once again, was one, one, is part of the point system we were awarded. The benches were part of the point system we were awarded.
Correct.
So we can try to relocate those or move them around with, that's not a problem.
Again, it's one of logistics, really.
Yes.
If you move it from a present space, either A, you're going to take away parking, or B, you're going to take away points.
Maybe you could shrink it and add parking. I don't know, just some discussion.
Yes, we'll definitely review it with the engineering team.
Or put the benches out towards the sidewalk? I don't know, I'm just, if you get the two feet.
I get from the public's perception of the bench what it could mean. I don't believe it was ever intended, it was supposed to dress up the site, but.
And I, and I like the benches, and I like the sculpture. I'm just kind of wondering why the baseball diamond kind of in the middle of the traffic flow.
I think that was just traffic flow and how to get more green space.
Correct.
Where else could I put the benches? Maybe I reduce the benches.
It is for traffic flow.
It is for traffic flow.
And I think also for the bio, I think they need the added green space.
Makes sense.
Anything else?
Nope.
Any questions for us? Do you have an idea of what we?
We absolutely.
Thank you very much for your time, though.
Yes, and we appreciate the feedback. It will trust me, we have notes.
And, and thank you for coming for a sketch plan. We do really appreciate being able to have this before, you know, for your, in front of us.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on, please, on reports. Do you have any, any besides me?
I do not.
Not from me.
Um, D D A. We're already starting a plan for Boogly, so that is our October month-long celebration. There's going to be a lot of skeletons downtown, it's going to be lovely. There was conversation about the downtown master plan formally actually being adopted finally. They removed the parking study out of it, so there was a discussion about, you know, when can we do another parking study, because we will benefit from it for our, our future zoning purposes, or zoning rewrite purposes. And then more murals are on the way. And they started looking at the Robina Public Space Design, so that's North Robina at Twelve Mile. And I think they're looking at making it a more inviting space without necessarily closing down the streets. Like, a few years ago, they tried to close it down to make a plaza. I think we're now trying to look at how do we activate that space, but still, you know, you can close it for an event, but keep it open at other times. So they're looking at different designs, and, you know, they were supposed to weigh in. It hasn't gone a whole lot further than this is, what kind of stuff do you want? Do you want this plant or do you want this material? I guess that's probably it. Commissioner, any comments? Kristen, any comments?
Nope.
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Hi.
Wait for you to give me permission. I don't know why I.
You just started doing it, so now I'm just like, it's your thing.
Now it's just you guys wait for me.
I was getting this to those long meetings, so it's like, it's a bit of a dark yet.
Still missed final jeopardy.